Let's call the P. North Police. We can start today, the evening, yes, please, please. Mr. Lucas.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Yeah, well, on alert here. Jeff or Brenda, see something kind of unique like this up tonight at air?
Yeah.
Okay. First order of business would be to put on minutes of September 30th, 2014, regular meeting. They have a motion, a current made a motion, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Wilkinson, second, Dan. Is that him on, yes?
Yes.
If I don't hear you, rowdy will go with our usual routine. Our signal.
I answered back, we had this.
All right. That's what I, that's what I mean. Okay. We did have one person sign in this evening, but he isn't here. Maybe the weather is discouraged and he may come another way sometime. Let's see. But on our regular agenda, we have reports tonight. First we have Joe, Joe Parsons, who want to give us an energy update. Joe?
I won't take up too much of your time. I think everybody here is familiar with the energy program, except maybe Rowdy, and pretty much know what we do and how we do it. The figures for this past, past year, when I give you a yearly figure, they're running, it's not fiscal year or calendar year, it's running May of 2013 to April of 2014. Reason for that is that's when I started was in, I actually was hired in in April, but they started counting my figures in May, in the May 1st. This year, our savings is down a little bit. For the year, our cost avoidance was $232,794. That's probably 20, maybe 30,000 off of what our normal years begin. I've got some reasons for that, you know, of course, we had an extremely harsh winter. The other thing is we've added some square footage, like at West Hamlin, we put in modular units over there, 3,000 additional square feet, eight new air conditioning units that were added to programs that weren't on the base year. We've added air conditioning at Guyan Valley and Dubal, both. And I'm working with the people from Energy, used to be Energy Education, now Synergistic. I'm working with them now on our Energy Star applications for this year, and hopefully we'll get all this stuff included in our, in our figures so that it will take that into account. I think that will reflect that over our savings. We're also not getting the shutdown in the summer that we used to get, and that's simply due to, we've got so many things going on in the schools this year. Extended school, Rocket Camp, credit recovery, summer schools, Energy Express. First couple of years I was here, you know, in the summertime, we just shut everything down. And, you know, freezers and coolers in some schools, Dana went around and collected the food and took them into one central freezer and cooler, and then we could shut the rest of them down. We're not able to do that because we have feeding programs and stuff, so that's all impacted what we did. So, the energy program seems to be doing what it has done in the past years. Like I said, savings is down a little bit this year. What I'd like to talk about also is some other things that we're doing that I'm kind of excited about. One thing is, we are involved in the Demand Reduction Program with PJM. It's the company that operates the Eastern Electric Bridge in the United States. And they pay us money each year to be on standby in case there's an emergency on the eastern seaboard, and they will call us and ask us to cut our consumption down. The good part about that is, there's specific time periods when they can ask you to do that, and those time periods don't conflict with school hours. So, it's when we would be shutting down anyway. They ask us to do one test a year, which is usually in early August before school starts, and, you know, that one day, we shut everything down, they do a test, and they pay us money. From October, the, October of 2010, when we first got involved with this program, to the current day, which has been the past four years, they have paid us $46,000 on this program.
What's the name of the program, DJ?
It's PJM.
PJM.
PJM Demand Reduction Program. It's, we administer that through a third party with KOR Energy, K-O-R Energy. Now, when we first set this up, Mr. Roach was the superintendent. He told me to, the money that we received from this program, to keep it, to run a rewards program for the schools, and also to spend the money for improvement of our efficiency in the schools. Ms. Lucas has continued that program, and I've worked with Bertie over the years, we've got a separate account for that, and all the money that goes into it. With that money, we have replaced nearly every old mercury-style thermostat in the system with programmable thermostats that we can go in and set them to come on an hour before school, and they go off at the end of the school day. And that saves us a tremendous amount of energy over the old type of thermostats. We've done that. We've bought, we've bought LED high bay lights for, you can see some of them over in the maintenance garage. We used to have nine of the metal halide, is that what you were saying? I think they're, were those 250s or 400s?
250s.
Two, 250 watt metal halide light fixtures in there with a ballast. And we have replaced all nine of those with four LED lights that have no ballast, and, you know, they're more energy efficient, and they don't produce the heat from the ballast. So, we've used it for that. And the big thing I want to talk about, we have had problems since I started here at West Hamlin Elementary with the interface between the original Johnson controls that were put on, on the building, and the Andover controls that we have replaced with. And the Andover controls don't directly control the equipment. They interface with Johnson and tell Johnson Controls to do it. That's been a problem, and we have tried over the past couple of years to get some of that replaced. And working with Mason Berry, who is our contractor that, that does Andover Controls, they quoted us a price of $1,500 per classroom, and $3,200 for each rooftop unit. And there's five rooftop units over there, one in the library, the kitchen, the cafeteria, the gymnasium, and the big computer lab. So, out of this money from the Demand Reduction Program, I paid to have the rooftop unit that gives us the most problems, which is, was the library, I paid that $3,200. They put the controls on that, it pretty much solved their problem. And we did four classrooms. The ones down on the end, the older ones down on the end towards the tennis courts, that when they built the new school, I think those were maybe part of the old school then? They were. So, we put those, those controls, it's another $6,000. So, four, you know, one rooftop and four classrooms, we spent essentially $10,000 of this money to have that changed. I've been working, and I'm pretty excited about this, with a fellow by the name of Kenny Huger from the West Virginia Department of Education. He formerly worked for Johnson Controls and Mason Berry, and now he works with the State Education Department, and he liaisons with counties like us to do these type of things. And I talked to Kenny, and Dana has talked to Kenny, and we both agree. Kenny said, "Well, look, if you'll order these parts for me, I'll give you a parts list." He said, "I'll come down and do this work for you free of charge, free of labor." So, he gave us a parts list, and for $2,800 of parts, he was able to do all four of the remaining rooftop units at West Hamlin. Now, at Mason Berry's quoted price, that would have been $12,800. So, we saved $10,000 right there and got work done that we've been trying to get done for quite a few years. So, we've got 29 other classrooms at West Hamlin Elementary. And Kenny starts talking to me, and he says, "You know, you can go on eBay and purchase used Andover controls," he said, "that are perfectly fine." He said, "Just somebody has upgraded, they're trying to recoup some of their money." So, he started looking for us, and we didn't have an eBay account. So, I had to work with Bertie and Darlene in accounting, and they set up an eBay account. He called me one day, and he says, "There is a guy right now on eBay that has the type of controllers that we'll need to do those classrooms at West Hamlin." He said, "He wants $25 a piece for the controllers." And he said, "I've already called him and talked to him, and if we buy 10 or more, he'll let us have it for $20 a piece." So, in the time, and he said, "They've got 47 of them left." He said, "I'd buy all of them." He said, "In case there are a few that's not good." He says, "That's fine, and if not, we'll use them somewhere else down the road." So, in the time it took us to set up the eBay accounts and everything, he only had 40 left. So, we bought all 40 of those controllers for less than $1,000 that will enable us to do all the work on there. Kenny Huger is going to do that work for us free of charge. The only thing he asks is we provide somebody out of maintenance or myself to help him pull wire and do that type of stuff. Now, there'll be some additional charges. I got with Bertie and Danny Daly and Dana, and they come up with some money that was left over for some type of project, I don't know which one. But there's about $15,000 we can use to do this work at West Hamlin. We've already saved a tremendous amount of money by buying these controllers used, and I don't know how many other additional parts we'll have to buy, but I, I'm envisioning that we may get the entire rest of the building done for less than $10,000. And, and that truly excites me. At $1,500 for 29 rooms, we were looking at $43,500 to finish that building. If we can get it done in less than $10,000, that's fantastic. We've already saved $10,000 on the work he's done already and completed on the rooftop units. So, we're looking at maybe $50,000 of savings on upgrades that are pretty desperately needed at that one school. The other thing that he's going to do for us, we, we have trouble with other people spending our money in these gymnasiums. And what I'm talking about is various groups, you know, that go in, they turn the air conditioning on, and they leave it, you know, this is after hours, late at night, whenever. I'm not out there every night, you know, so I can't go in every night and make sure they turn stuff off. And if they go in, and they will go in, and set an air conditioner at 50 degrees on hold and leave for a couple of days, guess what happens? We burn up a $4,000 compressor in one of our new air conditioning units at Guyan Valley Middle School.
Are these thermostats just like anyone could operate, I mean, that are accessible to them?
Yeah, they're, they are accessible, they're, they're not like these. These aren't the programmable ones. But even the programmable thermostats that we put up, they have an override on them so that teachers in a classroom or whatever can set the, set the override to a certain degree, and then they're supposed to hit the run schedule button when they leave. Well, the people that don't work for us don't know that, and they don't care because they're not paying the bill. I, I can't tell you how many times I've gone into a gymnasium on a Friday night or early Saturday morning and found the heat on 83s. And if I hadn't been in there that, that particular day, it wouldn't run at 83s all weekend long, and you know how much it takes to heat a gymnasium to 83s, especially when it's empty of people. Same thing with air conditioning. So...
Joe, can you get on, put cages on and talk that?
We can, Fred, but here's what they do. You'll put a cage up this week, next week you go back, and the front of the cage is laying on the floor where they busted it off.
Oh, well, I would put up a camera, I'd stop that real quick.
Well, here's, here's our solution to that, what we're going to try to do. We were over at Guyan Valley, and Kenny Huger said, "Do you have internet service here in the gymnasium?" I didn't think we did, but we do. And he said, "We can put controls on this, and we'll fix it so that nobody can mess with it, and it'll be controlled from right over here in my office. We can set it, and then if they, if they have a dance, if they have a ball game, they got to do what all the other principals do, is just, just call me, send me an email, say, just like this past weekend, they had a community night with the movies and stuff over here, and a pageant. They had a beauty pageant, I guess, in the big gym, and they had the community night in the little gym at Hamlin Elementary. Chad said he called me, said, "We've got this going on from this time." I said to, set the computer, and the air conditioning was on for it. They didn't need it.
Now, this is what you're referring to here, would this be at all of the gymnasiums, at all the schools?
Just, uh, right now, we have, we have that control already at Hamlin, Harts, and Lincoln County High School. The only two gyms that we don't have that control on is Guyan Valley Middle School and Dubal. Once Kenny Huger found out that we had internet service, he said, "I can put controls here for you."
At Dubal also?
We will eventually do Dubal. Right, right now...
Do they have internet service there that could do it too?
I'm certain they have internet service in the building at Dubal.
So you can run it?
So, yeah, we can just run it in there. Kenny told, gave me a list of things that we would need, controllers, and, once again, eBay supply, all of that for less than $500, one of the smaller controllers. However, we still need enclosure boxes, net controllers, and power supplies. Well, Dana and I got to talking about it, and the, there are, at the old Harts High School that we sold or gave to the County Commission for Community Center, and at the Aitville School, they had card readers with the box and a net controller and a power supply. So, we have already approached, matter of fact, the one from, that the County Commission had in the, what's now the Community Center, we've already got that box. We sent our maintenance people up, they said we could have it, it was no use to them. So, we went up, we got the box, we got the net controller, which is an expensive item, probably $600 or $700, and the power supply, it's laid over there in maintenance. I'm working now trying to get Bridget, and I've already talked to her a couple of times, she said she had no problem giving us the one out of the Aitville School, and she's pretty certain that it's still in there. But I'm telling you, she is tough to get hold of. And I'm trying to work out a date when I can get up there, when she can let us in the building and get that box too. That'll save us a tremendous amount of money there. And once again, Kenny's going to do that work free of charge. He additionally said, not only can he do the two air conditioning units, he said, "While we're in here doing this," he said, "Let's do your hanging heaters too." So, we're going to put automated controls on the heat and air conditioning at the Guyan Valley Gym. That's probably going to be his next project, and then, then we'll start at West Hamlin. But all of these parts are laying over there in my office now, starting to look like Fred Sanford's place, we've got so much stuff laying around that we brought in for these projects. And like you said, we'll eventually get to do, to do Dubal also. So, that will, that will solve a big problem for us. Like I said, we, we can't afford to pay $4,000 for compressor, you know, every other year, whenever, however often they, they do that. So, those are just some of the things that we're doing, you know, with, with the energy and trying to make us more efficient, which, that will also, by putting those controls on those various buildings, we'll be able to modulate it, bring it on at the right time, cut it off at the right time, and we'll save money in the long run in that too, on our energy bill. It seemed like there was one other thing else going to be, and it popped into my head just then, and it's already popped out, so I'll shut up and sit down, unless you all have questions.
Joe, you do know that they make lay-in LED lights now?
Yes, and that reminds me of the other project, the other thing I was going to mention. We have been working with Ed Outlaw from AEP. They will give you a reimbursement now, and, and we've received, I think, two separate checks already from that program on the stuff that we've already bought, all of the programmable thermostats, LED lighting, some of the other, we bought a few LED lights for the outside of the building. They reimbursed us for all that. I just saw an article in the Charleston Gazette where the state is paying $2.2 million to convert all of the streetlights at interstate intersections over to LED.
I think those LED lights are around $130, and they give you a 20, I think you end up costing about $110.
Yeah. That, we could, if we could write a lighting grant somewhere, the problem is, is just like this building here, you wouldn't think this, but I know this because, if you'll notice, if you look at some of these lights, you'll, you'll see there's only two light bulbs there. Well, those are four light fixtures. And myself and Doug Miller, way back when, when I first started this program, went around and de-lamped a lot of these lights because it was just too much light. But just in this square hallway right here, there are 91 light fixtures. So, you're talking, you know, $100, $130 a light fixture, you know, we've got to come up with that money to pay our share, you know, even if they do give us a 20% discount so, or a rebate. So, you know, money still becomes a problem, but some, some places they have grants that we can write for maybe, and, and we'll continue to look at those. But we are actively participating in our rebate program, and anything that we purchase, they, you know, just purchase some different style, were those LEDs? They are LEDs. Different style LED lights to use in some of these gyms and maybe the smaller gyms that we can do. Because these ones we used over here, they're, they're costly, and you can see them in some of the gyms that we have out there now, as the lights fail, when, when a metal halide light goes out, we're taking it down, putting up the LED. But they're, I think, what, $900 a piece?
They're close.
Right at $900 a piece. So, that's a, that's a big chunk of money. And what we've generally done is date, like, we'll buy a dozen of those lights, and Dana will buy half of them out of maintenance budget, and I'll buy half of them out of this Demand Reduction money. And, you know, that's, that's what we've been doing.
The new light at Hamlin Middle School in the entrance there, that's an LED light. They've got exit lights, everything's going towards LED.
And it's an extremely efficient light, it doesn't produce heat.
The traffic lights are LED.
And one other thing I was going to mention, I, I had a conversation with Danny Daly the other day. The big piece of fruit hanging there that we, where we can still save a bunch of money is getting these computers turned off in the schools at night. I don't know if any of you have been out, and like, I extend that invitation again, any of you that ever want to come out and go with me in the evening, I'll show you what kind of stuff we look at, what kind of waste, where we're wasting money. But you walk into one of these computer labs over at the high school at, say, 9:30, 10 o'clock at night, and it is, you can feel it, it is probably 6, 7 degrees hotter than the other rooms, and it's because of the heat generated from the computers that are left on in the, in the building. I've been speaking with Danny Daly for quite some time. There are products out there where you can shut the computer down at the end of the day, and it will stay off, and then the server will send a wake-up call to that computer, say, at 5:00 in the morning, which is what my target is, is 5:00, and then that gives them from 5:00 to 7:00 to retrieve their updates, and then they're, they're on and ready when the teachers and the kids come into school at 7:00, 8:00. That's a huge savings potential for us. I think I've told you in a previous meeting, the Philadelphia public school system saved nearly a million dollars in one year just simply by turning their computers off at the end of the day. So...
When these things happen, have you, I mean, I realize it's not always effective, but have you talked like to the principals there, who shared that with their lab people?
Steven, every, every time I go into a building, I have an audit form I'm supposed to fill out. Now, I'll be the first one to tell you, anymore through the daytime, I very seldom fill them out because it's pretty much the same thing I see every time. It's classroom doors blocked open to the hallway, lights left on, you know, maybe a window open here or there, but nothing, you know, nothing more than that usually. So, I quit filling them out in the daytime. I go in still, and I make notes, but the evening time audits, I've got files over there full of the notes I leave for the, for the principals. And I've got some principals who are really good at relaying that onto their staff. And I've got some principals I'm confident never looked at. So, it's just a matter of...
But the other proposal, or the way you'd like to do that with Danny, is where they wouldn't be involved necessarily, have to do it?
No, well, yeah, the teachers would need to turn them off, well, I don't know, they may be able to remotely turn them off too, but my idea was that the teacher, the last class of the day, tell the students, "Turn your computer off, turn your monitors off," because a lot of people don't realize, if you turn the computer off, the monitor's still on. And then in peripherals, the printer, any scanners that they have. But what, what I was getting ready to say, and I lost my train of thought, I'm getting old to senile, I guess, Danny Daly told me that we are closer than we have ever been. He says, "Maybe just a few months away from having the capability of doing exactly that, is, is system-wide, wake the computers up at a certain time." And that, that can all be done through a server. And hopefully, we'll get that done, and if, if that happens, you'll see some tremendous savings, I'm certain.
Well, that's something needs to be done. It's, oftentimes when you have a lab, there may not be a particular person that's responsible for it, because multiple teachers may use it, so you know whose job it is. I know when I was still a principal, I, that was one of the things I would do at the end of the day, I'd go around and shut down all the computers, and then next morning, when I get around getting the heat off, I'd turn them all back on again.
Yeah.
But they weren't worried about updates and stuff, you know?
Yeah, and, and that's a big thing now. I mean, when we talked about that over at the high school before, you know, Greg Gosney jumped stiff-legged because they, they've got updates all through the night, and, and they can't do it during the daytime when the kids are actually on the computer, it makes the whole system too slow. And I understand that, and I, I've worked with Greg on that also. But this, this is something that we can do, there's, there's a huge savings potential there for us to save some.
I agree.
Any other questions?
I just have one question.
Yes.
I hear you say you're going out on Saturdays in the evenings, do you have a set schedule or do you just...
No.
How do you work your out?
Here's, I'll tell you what they want me to do and what I do.
Now, who is that?
And when I say "they," this is Synergistic. When we first partnered with them, they have five time blocks through the day. They have early morning transition, which is in the morning when there's nobody in the building but custodians and cooks. They want, want you to go in during that time and see how are the, you know, are, are the custodians coming in at 6:00 in the morning and turning everything in the building on, or are they leaving it off and letting the teachers turn the classroom light on when they come in? Then they have occupied, which is during the school time when people are actually in the building. They have end-of-the-day transition, once again, so on the back end when, when the staff is gone, and it's just custodial staff in the building. And, once again, and I talk, every year in service, I talk with custodial staff about what I want to see them do. And a lot of times what they do is, they turn every light in the building on, and as they clean a room and come out, they turn the light off, and that's how they know they've cleaned that room. Well, you know, if you can't open the door, look, and tell you've already cleaned that room, there's a problem. So, what we try to get them to do is leave everything off until you're ready to go in that room, and then turn the light on and go in and clean. That saves money throughout the whole building. Gymnasiums, it's always the last thing they clean, it's the most expensive lights we run, and they always leave them on until they go in at night to clean. But anyway, they have end-of-day transition, they have late-night shutdown when there's nobody in the building at all, and then they have unoccupied, which is like the weekends. So, what I have found that works best for our purposes is, I usually work Monday day shift because we're coming off the weekend, if there's going to be a problem with boilers or chillers coming back on or needs... on or needs reset, or something happened in one of the rooms when it's shut down, they're going to call in, and I'm here, you know, during the daytime to take care of that, so the rooms are comfortable. Um, Tuesday, I'll, I'll go either way. I'm working evenings today. Wednesday, I always usually work evening shift. Thursday, I'll work day shift. And then Fridays, I always try to work Friday evening and/or Saturday morning, or a combination of both. And the reason for that is, when we're saving our money, it's the weekends, when there's nobody in the building. So, I want to go around Friday night, you know, after everybody's out, during the end-of-the-day transition or late night part of Friday, and make sure they're shut down, or come out early Saturday morning and go in around when there's nobody in the building at all and make sure they're shut down. That way, we get all day Saturday, all day Sunday shutdown. But in answer to your question, I work forty hours a week. I set my own schedule. I, I usually tell Dana and Debbie over there what I'm going to be working the day before, and it changes sometimes. And anytime I take time off, uh, for NA day or sick day or whatever, I have a whole list of people I know. I send to Dee Cockrell and Risa, who actually is my supervisor. I send, you know, Ms. Lucas, to Jeff, to Dana, and also to a lady by the name of Rachel Bias, you know, Risa, who actually tracks my time and stuff. And I have all my time sheets over there. I have all of my audit forms, and I've got a form, a report that I have to send into synergistic every week that lists every school that I was in that week, you know, the time period I was in there, what I found while I was in there, anything extra I did, like, uh, you know, changing filters now. When I go out and change a filter, I put that in the report that I've changed filters at Lincoln County High School. Uh, you know, all this work I'm doing with Kenny Huger, I list that down as extra things, and then they track how much time. They want me out of the office eighty percent of my time. They say twenty percent in there. Um, and that sometimes is a problem because, you know, the computer that I work off of that controls all these buildings is in my office. So, if we're having trouble, and I'm having to say we've got Simco in here working on a, on a unit, and their worker, because they don't have anybody that's Andover trained, so they'll get on the cell phone and they'll call me, and they say, you know, "Can you manipulate this valve open or this valve shut?" And I'm over on the computer doing that. Well, that's, that's not time out of the schools, but it's directly affecting the school's performances.
I'm just curious, because you were talking about Saturdays and evenings and everything.
Yeah, I'm, I'm out a lot of times, all, you know, funny hours, you know. I, I don't go out, I'll be honest with you, I don't go out late at night much anymore. When I first started, I'd go out, and I'd be in the buildings at two o'clock in the morning. And what I've found is, generally, I'm not going to see anything at two in the morning that I didn't see at ten at night. So, I, so I don't go in real late like that anymore.
All right. Well, it looks like we've got a lot of good things going on that are beneficial to save us some money, so.
I hope so.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.